I call this meeting of the Rocky Mountain City Council to order. We normally start our meetings with prayer. At this time, I ask Councilman Robert Blackwell to lead us in prayer if he can. I ask you to stand there.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for our lives. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you for providing us with your wisdom tonight to deliberate over matters of import to residents of our entire city. We thank you, Father, for bringing us into prosperity and to renaissance. We ask that you help us to work together and move together forward. In your name we pray.
Mr. Blackwell?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Watkins?
Here.
Rogers?
Here.
Bullock?
Here.
And Miller?
Here.
If you came in, there was an agenda in the box. And again, we'll go by the agenda of item numbers. We're at item number four now, approved of minutes of a special call to the board of the city on September 12th, 2018. And the wait was scheduled to be in the City Council Hill, September 24th, 2018. Are there any corrections or additions to anything? If not, we're standing as submitted to you. We have a couple of presentations. And again, we're going to make the presentations. There is a petitions to be received from the public portion of the meeting, which is item number six. So as we present these presentations, it's not a time that somebody will come up and make comments. We make the comments at the next item, which is petitions to be received from the public. The first item is a presentation and proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2018 as disability awareness and employment law to human relations director Archie Jones and members of the Mayor's Commission on Persons with Disabilities and Human Relations staff. So at this time, I ask Archie and any member of the staff or the commission to come forward. They do a lot of great work in our community. Again, there are people that are certainly disabled, but again, this organization focuses on and do a lot of great work in our community. So again, I want to recognize them and have them come forward. Again, if you've not been to our meetings and you want to speak at item number six, I do need to fill out a form in the office of the day. Maybe one or bring it to you or someone in the staff. And then we'll go by the books and send it up when we get to that point. The next presentation I'd like to make is an adoption of presentation of a resolution recognizing our 40th anniversary of the 1978 sanitation work strike that defeated its historical society members. Again, this is a request that came through Councilman Robert Blackwell. I'm not going to read the whole resolution because it's a very long one, but I am going to pick up part of it and again, try to paraphrase. We had a sanitation worker that there was what he thought was somebody was disposing of something. This is back in 1978. He got charged with larceny for doing this. So again, there was a lot of sanitation workers that went on strike. And so as that happened, I'm just going to read the bottom portion of this and then ask those members that are here that will come forward and will make this presentation. It says, "Whereas after negotiations with the city manager, the workers agreed to return to work without retaliation. And the concerned citizens associated used the press statement of August 30th, 1978, outlining the condition of the workers' return to work and also outlining future bills of movement, one of which to change the unfair method of selecting city council, which underrepresented the 40% black population of the city. Whereas a unification rally was held in Thompson Park on September 3rd and on September 25th, Alexander Evans case became before the Nash County Superior Court. Many sanitation workers did not work that day in order to attend the trial in support of Mr. Evans. He carried a full model color television into the courtroom as evidence of items residents left by the trash for sanitation workers to pick up. Whereas just after 15 minutes of deliberation, the jury found Mr. Evans not guilty and Alexander Evans returned to work and continued to work for the city of Rocky Mountain until he retired in 1996. Whereas this worker strike and community support movement from July the 10th to September 25th, 1978 is considered the major civil rights and labor struggle in Rocky Mountain history and the community came together, the city of justice was served, and challenged racial discrimination in the city of Rocky Mountain and improvements were made in the wake of the strike. Whereas the 1983 voting rights suit of Naomi Green versus the city of Rocky Mountain has held that unfair and racially disproportionate board system that was the city of Rocky Mountain City Council has elected, which is still in effect today. Whereas this year marks the 40th anniversary of the 1978 Rocky Mountain sanitation strikers, worker strike and the Phoenix Historical Society will sponsor an educational program on Saturday, October 13th, at 1:00 PM at the BTW Community Center on the significance of this movement for the eastern North Carolina. And whereas the city of Rocky Mountain desires to recognize the courage and determination of sanitation workers who risked their jobs for justice for a coworker that unfairly accused us to fast community supporters in the face of the city administration at the time was failing to do the right thing to resolve this issue with Mr. Evans. And the workers, as a result of this struggle, exonerated now Alexander Evans from the charge of larceny and approved the conditions of workers at the city of Rocky Mountain. And as expressed in the CCA press statement, August 30th, 1978, the suffering of sanitation workers in the city of Rocky Mountain is a price that must be paid for democratic government and freedom. So at this time, we need to recognize it and pass this resolution. Now here are motions.
Go move. Second.
All opposed. At this time, I'd ask any members of the society to come forward and join in this presentation at this time. If I can have a man here to line, I swear the entire city council come down for a picture of what looks appropriate tonight. We've got to move on to item number six now. This is petitions to be received from the public. If you're not here, normally for our meeting, I'm just going to read this for you a bit. This is petitions from the public portion of our city council meeting. If you'd like to address the council, you need to sign up. If you did not get a form, please raise your hand. Someone will bring it to you. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individuals or council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager's staff for follow-up. We ask that you speak to the podium in a civil, non-argumentative and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and who asked, be asked to sit down and be removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak and you will have three minutes and we'll give you a heads up in about two and a half minutes. Samuel Battle, are you here?
I'm here.
I think, I thought I saw you back there.
I seen you.
Yeah.
I'm coming back after boxing again because I really want to know what y'all can do about that. I've got some group of kids that I'm dealing with, training with. Officer Link Brooks, that's our police for Rocky Mountain. I trained with him over here in Kmart in LA over there. We have some kids that just got back from South Carolina, wearing some trophies. And these kids need some type of stuff like that at Rocky Mountain. That's what I'm pushing. And Mr. Delport, his son fight over there. He get kids two vans, gas it up, don't charge nothing. They go to South Carolina, they go all over. We can't get that for nobody on the city council. Nobody. And he's a white man. So it ain't no race issue. He helping black kids, Mexicans, all over. Everybody. We can't, we can't get that, nothing from y'all. Kids dying every day. I come over here every week, every other week, pushing this issue. The wars, one, two, three, 19, whatever you want to say, ain't doing nothing. When y'all gonna give me a call and let me know what y'all gonna do? Because five seats come up next year. Five seats come up, four or five come up next year, but you'll be out next year on somebody to vote for you. These kids right here need some type of, need some type of sponsorship from the city, from y'all. Give me a call or something. We need some help for these kids in the city. Where everybody worrying about event center, buying buildings and everything like that, leaving the kids out there hungry, robbing, killing. But we worrying about our self. It's never been a black and white issue. Our kids are black, Mexican and white. At the end of the day, we're all human beings. It don't make a difference what color you is. So we need to get, we need to push this for this boxing thing. Sugar Ray Leonard, I keep saying, Sugar Ray Leonard is from Rocky Mountain. And I don't know if y'all know who Sugar Ray Leonard is. James Bogan is from Rocky Mountain. Light heavyweight, light heavyweight champion of Rocky Mountain.
We have that 30 seconds.
Okay, I know how many seconds I got. And Mr. Collins, you got, you got real estate all over here. Why you don't give a donation tonight for these kids? You all in Hales, Chrome County? Give a donation. Because Delport is, he gas two vans up and send the kids on the other way. Because he, he care. A white man care, not a black man.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the process?
If you speak in your mind.
No, ma'am. And press. The button, right? Alright, what is the process by which Mr. Battle could apply formally for some assistance for these young people? Does he have to file some application to be a program through the city?
I don't listen. Listen, I would like some questions.
I'll start again. I ask if there is some process that Mr. Battle has to go through to fill out an application for funding or for program assistance from the city?
We don't have a particular process usually that requests like this will come through the normal budget processes. But you might recall several months back, we attempted to establish a process for accepting requests from the community for consideration during the budget time. However, that doesn't stop anyone from submitting a proposal. Certainly, the staff would evaluate that and then bring it to the council for, for its consideration.
Okay, so to whom and staff should that be addressed?
You may address that to the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Battle, you know how to do that?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to bad box.
I understand.
That's all I wanted to do. I wouldn't be nothing else, just bad box. That's all I needed to do.
Thank you.
And then after flood, catch these kids, do everything around you now. That's all I wanted you to do.
Thank you. Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, ma'am.
We currently have a boxing program.
We do?
For kids.
Okay.
I would recommend Mr. Battle talk to someone in Parks and Recreation and find out, oh, we are doing with kids.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Battle? We do have a boxing program for the Parks and Recreation Department. So if you'd like, contact Kelvin.
The guy that did it, got fired. He's not here no more.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, hold on.
I was gonna. Yes. Mentioned that this boxing is not new. This was brought up about four or five years ago. We instructed city manager, during that time it was Charles Penney, now Rochelle Smallton, in reference to incorporating that in some of our activities, the programming with Parks and Rec. Also, we just funded the boys and girls with a hero program to help our youth and some disadvantaged youth as well. We also put tons of money in Parks and Rec. We just put money in South Rocky Mountain Community Center that desperately needed. And so we are doing great things for the children, but the children, parents must enroll them in the program so they can take, take advantage of the program. So to this whole discussion about boxing, the council had already had this conversation, had already put it in the programming for boxing. And we've been talking about this for a very long time.
You said, "Sergeant Mount," didn't say Hales, Chrome. We got nothing on that Hales, Chrome.
We do have the BTW. And with the program, it's not just designated for South Rocky Mountain or Nash. That programming is a dual for both counties, for all Rocky Mountain citizens. So we fund the program, we just need the people to participate in it.
Captain, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, moving on to the next one. Reverend Walker, are you still here?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Battle. Can I start? I'll say, anyway, to the mayor, the council, I'm happy to be, be here. It's amazing how time flies, isn't it? Forty years, that's, that's a long time. Forty years ago, these workers came to my office and told me of their desire to protest and go forward. And I've never worked with a greater group of men. Very happy tonight to have Mrs. Evans here tonight. And my heart goes out to her. And only the Lord knows the suffering that this put her family through. I appreciate the resolution from the city, but I hope incorporated in that resolution is some kind of apology because it's evident that the city was wrong. And it's evident that the city benefited from these men exercising their constitutional rights. And they did it well. They did it peacefully and our city is better as a result of it. I want to also commend Mr. Jim Nguyen, the most red and committed young man I've ever worked with. I hope you will attend the rest of the events that they have planned through Phoenix. He knows the history, not only of the workers, but this city in terms of our political struggle. And there are a lot of folk here. I would eventually ask that when I say that everybody just stands so your city supporters here. So I wanted to be here to, to say, we don't need to just be symbolic here. I discovered, and I'll be finished here, that it is hard hat workers that runs a city in operation. This is your offense to our beautiful city manager and our mayor, but if y'all don't show up for work, who cares? But let the sanitation workers.
We've got about 30 seconds.
Not show up for work. You let them not do their job, and we've already seen it. This city came to a halt. So anybody that would oppose an apology, you really don't know who you are because some of you on this council wouldn't be there if it wasn't for these men. I want to ask all the citizens to keep supporting, please stand.
Troy Davis?
Mr. Mayor, for, for Mr. Davis, can you come on down? I'm not going to be on for it. I just want to say to Mrs. Evans, thank you for your sacrifice. You're like a rose apart. I want to say to Stupor Cole, who worked hand in hand with Naomi Green to fight injustice, thank you. You're our third good marshal. We appreciate that. And what Reverend Walker said is true. If Ms. Rain, and I was not even here 40 years ago. And 40 years ago, there was no possibility of this group of individuals that were seated at this table, much less the person sitting behind the primary seat of city manager, ever reflecting the diversity of a community. And it's because of the sacrifice of the man, and at that time it was all men, so we're not being sexist, but it was the man who picked up other people's garbage and trash that were treated like trash, that had double standards imposed on them and that were accused unfalsely from their employer. And that had to have a court of law say that the employer was incorrect. And every system that stood behind it was unjust. And that's the moment that we stand in today. And I would like to apologize on behalf of the entire city of Rocky Mountain, as it sounds. Is someone else here who worked on staff at that time? Thank you, sir. Can we just look at you? Can we just take a moment and look at you?
He was on sanitation.
You were on sanitation team at that time? Who else picked up the trash that other people threw away? Thank you, sir. We appreciate what you represented because your work changed Rocky Mountain for the better, for everyone, black, white, Latino, Asian, people of no eastern descent. You opened up the doors for all of us. Maybe you knew what you were doing, maybe you didn't. Reverend Walker, thank you for being the banner, holding that banner of justice like Dr. King did. We appreciate you. And I don't think anybody on this council would ever do anything to intentionally undo the work that's been done. But now I just say, we still got work to do. Thank you for working with us. And thank you, council members and mayor, for standing in this moment and recognizing the sacrifice that was made and making a commitment to never, ever let it slide back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackwell.
I have one question. Their apology is included in the resolution.
Yeah.
If that correct, if not, now, what would you want to add? Well, I think we need to amend and go on if we believe in what we're doing and amend the resolution that the city of Rocky Mountain apologizes to the sanitation workers and to Ms. Evans. And that's the right thing to do. We want to be on the right side of issues. We don't need to wait, think, I mean, and come back to another meeting. While we got this great crowd of listeners, I would like to make a motion that we amend the resolution to include that this city apologizes for what we, what the city had done lawfully to Mr. Evans, his family, and to the city workers.
A second motion. Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Alright, Mr. Davis. We will issue a new resolution here for Park Commission. Thank you.
Troy Davis, 1525 F Road. I was in the committee at home meetings and I'm a little upset in regards to spending $68,000 on parking lots, or should I say that it's already spent and then you guys halt the project? I'm a little baffled. I don't know if we need more city staff or exactly who's in charge of this, but it seems to me that you should spend money for the work. It's actually agreed upon or whatever the agreement was to halt that work.
We haven't spent the money.
Well, the parking lots aren't done, almost. So if you haven't spent the money, then somebody's not going to get paid. Alright? I don't know if you rode past those parking lots, but I ride past every day. Secondly, the urgent repair monies, I was a little disappointed to hear that no work has been done in regards to those programs. It's about to get cold outside, there's leaky roofs all over this city. Those elderly people needs that, those grants. Matching rate program, I was told that they don't know when that's going to be, you know, handed out. People, we're looking to improve the housing stock and since this new department has been created, it has been everything but improving housing stock. I think we need to look at the staffing needs of this city because from what I see on the outside looking in, it's horrible. And you guys. And you guys need to do something about it.
Thank you, Reverend Jones.
Good evening, we are the City Council. Uh, I'd like to make a request, uh, for street closing on, uh, October twenty-sixth. For a youth, uh, youth department request for a, uh, fall festival on one hundred block of, uh, southwest Main Street. We, uh, do it annually. Last year, we did it on Howell Street. We'd like to move it on Main Street for this year. Two hours of, uh, four and, uh, nine thirty on the twenty-sixth of, uh, October.
What's the process for that?
Yes, if you would, um, submit your bitten request to the city manager's office, then we'll, we'll process that.
Good, that's a good example.
You can.
Uh, Stacy Graham.
Thank you, mayor. I have a packet that I'd like for the council members, the mayor and the city manager to receive, which goes along with what I have to say. I was going to talk to you today, um, about domestic violence and animal abuse because October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. However, on Saturday, October sixth, um, just before noon, on North Glendale Avenue here in Rocky Mountain, that's Ward one, Mr. Knight, an animal wandered into the neighborhood. That animal is pictured there. The neighbor called for animal control and dispatch summarily dismissed their request and refused. This neighbor then got onto two five-two Hood News, a site that I was unaware of before now. This site has thirty-five thousand members. Over seven thousand members are Rocky Mountain residents. And this is a system that apparently is used to look for help when government doesn't respond. And to put out information on what's going on in the city. So what happened was wonderful organizations like Paw and C and Maggie's Society got involved. They have since made a statement that it's probably best for this animal, that animal control didn't come. Because it probably would have been euthanized. You can see a difference between Saturday's picture and Sunday's picture in here. This animal is very healthy, very, has the ability to be helped, excuse me, and can be helped. If you flip over the first picture, you will actually see copies of portions of the city ordinance. And it actually states that the purpose is to protect animals from abuse or conditions harmful to their well-being. Those are your ordinances. Those aren't my words. But it seems to me that that's not happening. Again, we're asking for better response to animal welfare issues. I've already spoken to the council about how animal welfare issues exacerbate and help continue violent crime because of lack of empathy and learned behaviors. And I believe that this is not going to be a financial issue for the city council or for the city itself. Because organizations like Paw and C and Maggie's Society are willing to step out the assistance.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Okay? And animal control needs to work cooperatively with these people and to support the resources. Um, if you want to keep up on this animal, WRAL has done some extensive work and continues to do updates.
Thank you. Another question is, uh, to the city manager, what is the process when a citizen calls in reference to, um, an animal, um, cat, dog, whatever, um, when it's in this kind of condition?
Right, um.
How does this respond to?
I, I'll have to, um, you know, uh, really check on that because it's most unusual for animal control to not respond. As I understand it, uh, I'm hearing that they did not respond in that situation. So I would have to look into that. But if it's called into the dispatch, animal control responds and then takes the necessary actions, um, regarding the animal.
Excuse me, I speak from a past incidents when folks have called me about animals that need help. It seems that, um, animal control functions during the normal business day and not necessarily after hours and on weekends. Now, it may be if you can get in touch with a police officer and animals considered dangerous, you can get somebody else to do something about it. But in terms of aiding an animal and killing, I, I don't think that's happening. Well, you know, again, as I said, I would look into it, um, and investigate and report that.
Any other comments? If not, uh, if we did not come to the aid in a way in which we should have, it sounds like we did not, and asked the city manager to review that policy and have in place spelled out for all citizens, including the council. Uh, if an animal is in distress or need aid, what are the one, two, three steps or ABC? Which makes it very simple.
May I just respond briefly? I received a copy of the animal control protocols from the acting city chief. The protocols have not been revised or changed since nineteen ninety-six.
And that's one of the reasons we have to remember that we are.
And, uh, you're going to curate that.
All right. Boy Nittes.
Um, I've got a couple of concerns. The first one is, could y'all please reword the petition thing for citizens? I mean, in, in my understanding, a petition has been, a lot of people sign something. And I know the first time I came here, I didn't have a, a signed with a bunch of names on it. So I didn't know I could just get up and say what I wanted to say. I mean, uh, citizens' concerns might be better word than petition. That's just what I say. Um, and also, if you live within the city limits, but you're not in a neighborhood, does that kick you off the list of having, um, garbage cans and recycling bins? Cause I live in Rocky Mountain. Cause y'all put me in the city. But I don't get that. But anyhow, I would just like another one. I can't get one. And also, um, since we have this beautiful, very modern event center, um, I haven't been by there lately, but is, is the building and the parking lot still there? I know y'all can answer the question, so maybe somebody will call in and tell me. If it is, it needs to be removed. It needs to go someplace else to have a better home for whatever it's going to end up being. Also, I think the city council or somebody, tell me who I need to talk to. There's a place called, I think it's called Ebony and Ivory. It's on three oh one business, kind of close to where the Marita Bread place used to be. That's a dump. I don't know who owns it. But, you know, we're trying to get people into Rocky Mountain and see how progressive we are. And that place is, is falling down. So I don't know who does that. Oh, and your workshops. Y'all had one before you came to this meeting?
I only got about thirty seconds.
Is that open to the public?
Sure.
Thanks.
Question, somebody check on our battle, they're trying. Felix, could be him.
Um, well, I'm speaking in behalf of, uh, Mr. Battle. Uh, I work with, with the kids in this, uh, it's called, uh, Morey Tag Kickboxing Academy, Panther Academy. And, um, what he's, what he was trying to say is that we're looking for sponsorship, you know? We have, uh, kids going out of town, uh, to like about three, four hours away from here for competitions. And some of these kids, they don't really have the money, you know, to go to competitions, you know? And to tell you the truth, it's, it's, we, we actually, um, provide for these kids because we want them to go. But, I mean, I, I work just like everybody else does, you know? And a little bit of help would be fantastic, you know? I love working with these kids. Uh, I know that I'm going to have a champion coming out of Rocky Mountain. And Rocky Mountain is going to be put back on the map. And I'm not even from Rocky Mountain. I'm from California. But I'm going to put Rocky Mountain back on the map. You understand what I'm saying? I have my, my son over there. Raise your hand, Alukis. AKA Sniper. He just came back from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina with a defeat. He's one and O. Professional fighter. And he's only eleven years old. That's what I'm trying to make. I got Stephen Rublero and, um, my man Jonathan Rublero. He's the other eleven-year-old kid. They both, all three of them came back, champions. And that's what we're going to have here in Rocky Mountain. That's what I want. I want to put Rocky Mountain back on the map. I want kids out of the street. I know about gangs. I know about gang violence. I'm from south central Los Angeles. You understand what I'm saying? I've been there. I've done it. I'm forty-two years old. I came from south central Los Angeles. I'm, I was born in east Los Angeles. My parents are from, from Mexico. And I know all about the gang violence. I know, I don't want none of my kids going through the same thing I went through.
You got about thirty seconds.
Yes, sir. And, you know, I really appreciate you guys having me up here and, you know, I, I, we just need a little bit of help. That's it. You know, a lot of kids, they don't have a father. They don't have, you know, they live with their grandparents. I mean, and they want to do this because it's, it's really fun, you know? And the trainer, he's not here right now because he was training. But I'm one of the trainers too. And kids just love it, you know? And this is what we, we need. We need in Rocky Mountain. We don't, we don't need no, no, you know, I don't know.
Thank you, thank you. Jim Ryan.
Good evening. I'm Jim Ryan, the vice president of Phoenix Historic Society, African American History Base, Combe County. And I don't have anything that was been said by Reverend Walker, our councilman, well, councilman Knight, and others, uh, already said. Just want to thank the city for the continued support of our work, um, trying to bring forward and recover accord and promote the history here from slavery to freedom in Edgecombe and Rocky Mountain. And, um, our program is Saturday, one o'clock at the BTW Center. We thank the city for supporting us and having that program there. And we, right here, come out to hear more about the nineteen seventy-eight sanitation worker strike and its impact on this community and, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I say, uh, yes, Jim? Jim, thank you for writing the proclamation. Jim put a lot of work into it. Just thank you for your work behind the scenes. Can I pronounce this right, Salin and, uh-huh?
Good evening. I want to, uh, congratulate the council for the proclamation. I think, uh, the proclamation at this time is very, very important when we are seeing attacks, at least by the federal government, on the rights of workers. Uh, uh, cutting social programs, uh, protecting employers who leave, uh, uh, their, their companies, shutdown, uh, employers who, uh, who contribute to, uh, environmental disasters. Uh, uh, so this, this, this proclamation at this time is very, very significant. I think it places Rocky Mountain within, uh, the, uh, the, the, the tra- the trajectory of the struggle in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, it's very important, I think, to acknowledge that if these workers did not struggle, Alexander Evans would not have gotten his job back. And this kind of intimidation, uh, and false charges, uh, that took place, that it would have encouraged more of that treatment. These were all black workers. Black workers who had a pattern of seeing, uh, clothes and other stuff left on top of the trash containers, uh, who now, uh, are being falsely charged. And so I think it's, it's very, very, very important to recognize, uh, uh, this, uh, this pro- proclamation. I think one other point. Uh, I think it had a direct impact on the voting rights suit that was filed in Rocky Mountain. Three members of an organization, uh, that came out of the Kmart struggle called Black Workers for Justice were plaintiffs on the lawsuit dealing with the at-large system with Sister Naomi Green. And finally, I think we have to acknowledge their community. Alexander Evans was the leader in this community. And this struggle of the workers, this strike of the workers, was not just a worker's strike. It was a community strike as well. Because the community stood up with them, marched with them, and those kinds of things. So I think it's important, uh, that this understanding of this proclamation be, uh, pushed out widely, uh, throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our public petition portion of the meeting. Uh, we're going to move on to item number seven now, which is a public hearing relative to the preliminary assessment of the prepared and recovered calls incurred by the city. This is in connection with the housing code enforcement. Uh, there's a number of properties there. I agree them all. Recommended actions to adopt the resolution confirming the assessment. Any motion?
The move.
Seven.
Motion by Councilmember Turner, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eight is a consideration of memorandum of understanding. This is for the Nash County, uh, Rocky Mountain Public Schools. And the city of Rocky Mountain, this is the provision of six school resource officers. It updates the current Nash Rocky Mountain Public School officials. Recommended actions to approve a memorandum of understanding. Authorize the mayor and the city clerk execute the same on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item nine is an adoption of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget ordinance amendment. This is appropriating additional funds in our general fund. This is related to carry forward for the backup public, um, uh, it's public. It's our public. Safety point of contact. This is originally covered and unspent in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And it produces appropriations in the University of Telephone Fund in Corrective Era, and diversity appropriations and an ordinance adopted by the city council on September the tenth, two thousand eighteen. Recommended actions to adopt, adopt the budget ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We're going to table number ten at this time. Hopefully address that with our next meeting. Eleven is a consideration of the following requests from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. This is a conjunction with the development of CSX intermodal fund. A is a resolution to attempt to permanently close a portion of the strip drive from US three oh one to Tanner Road. And B, a resolution to delete a portion of College Road from the state maintained road system. Recommended action is adopt a resolution declaring the attempt to close. It schedules a public hearing for November the twelfth. And two, adopt a resolution to delete a portion of College Road from the state maintained road system. Some will. Motion by council member Blackwell, second by council member John. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We also need a motion to rescind our, um, motion to approve the minutes as it was submitted last time from a committee at home meeting. This was in the first place finding signs. And then we'll make a few much, so we need a motion to rescind that.
Yes, motion to, well, second.
I've got this level that, and then we'll do the meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mr. Knight. Is that it? Or a new motion?
Oh, the new motion that, just for the record, because I see the newspaper there. I, we rescinded the motion so the minutes and the conversation will be correct. But I'm not crazy and stupid because I heard the city manager say about the sixth district. So we rescinded that. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sixth, the fifth and the sixth district. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Uh, for the weight finding.
Have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. We're gonna go back and approve the minutes that we approved last time. And then, because I think originally the minutes said five instead of six. So we need to approve those minutes.
I moved that we approved the minutes with, that we approved the minutes as it was written previously.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. Uh, yes, we need to go to closed session for personnel matter. And we want to thank you all for being here tonight. And then have a safe journey.